All right, thank you Mayor Woods. So our lone item tonight is to recognize the members of Leadership Dal- oh, you need to do roll call. How about roll call mayor? Before I jump into the topic.
Okay, let's do roll call.
Yeah, let's do that.
Counsel President Schilling?
Here.
Counsel Adams?
Here.
Counsel Beriantos? Counsel Briggs is excused. Counsel Collins?
President.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counsel Janz?
Here.
Counsel Shane?
Here.
And Counsel Burton is excused.
We'll find the bad microphone in a minute. And turn it off and replace it. So, all right. So again, the lone item for tonight is the recognition for our Leadership Dallas 2023-2024 graduating class. As you recall, last year was our inaugural year. So this is cohort number two for Leadership Dallas. This is a program that helps just our citizens and business owners and employees of Dallas get to know a little bit more about how our community as a whole functions and works. So I included again the schedule on page three of your agenda so you can kind of see what each day involved for our participants. It was a half-day class on Thursdays. So the first day was just learning more about kind of Civics 101. They got to meet with elected officials and tour the courthouse, including going up in the clock tower, which was exciting. They had a healthcare day where they got to learn a lot about our healthcare systems in Dallas, including our hospital and emergency services response, nonprofits and social services, business and industry, education, public safety and emergency services. They had an arts and culture day where they got to express their own artistic talents and do some painting and other things. And then lastly, they had a recreation and tourism day this last month. Like last year, this group was tasked with doing a, kind of coming up with a way to serve their community and demonstrate their own leadership skills. I won't take away from what they might talk about. So I hope one of you talks about that. And they did a project just this last week. It's been going on for the last several weeks. But without further ado, what we will do is I'm just going to call on the first person to come up and just talk about their experience. They kind of have two to three minutes to just express how the program worked for them, what maybe something that they really enjoyed or learned through the process. And then they can call on the next person until we get through our eight participants this year. So I will just start with Lauren May, since she is right there. Yep, right here to the mill. If you can just introduce yourself and jump right in.
I'm Lauren May. I work at First American Title and Anytime Fitness here in town. I joined this program just to kind of network and get to know more people in town. But it turned out to be a lot more. Like Brian said, I liked learning the inner workings of the city and how the different aspects of it work. And I just really enjoyed a lot of the things we did every day. Some of the days it was like, oh, that was too short. We want to go longer. But I'd say my most favorite times were going up in the clock tower and writing my name up there. Now it's a part of history. So that was probably my favorite part because I was working in title, love history now. Going to jail and getting out.
Especially getting out, right?
Yes, I got a jail out of free card. Going to the 911 dispatch center and hearing the 911 calls was really awesome. We heard a possible Sasquatch in West Salem, so watch out. Meeting Craig Downs, he's the local artist here in town, and got my picture with him and we got to paint with him. That was really awesome because I see his artwork everywhere. And just being in the know about things kind of before other people knew about it, like the pickleball courts going in over by Lyle. It's kind of neat to be one of the first people to hear about it. And so, yeah, with our drive we did, we did a drive for Bambino's, the food bank, and the clothing closet as our project. And not only just did we see the need for things, but just for volunteering at those places because they needed a lot of help from just the community. So it's great to see how the community comes together with just volunteers and how volunteers really help the community run.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Lauren?
I always want to know how long the get out of jail free card is going to take.
I don't know. I know the sheriff too, so hopefully it doesn't expire.
I've got a question. You talked about the parts that were your favorites. What surprised you the most?
What surprised me the most? I guess how many nonprofits we have here in town. On nonprofit day, there was a giant list of just all these nonprofits and hearing from all the different ones. I was just kind of shocked to see how many we had here in town and how they're supported.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Lauren.
Yeah.
Why don't you pick your next speaker?
Hello, good evening. I am Claire Blockser. I am a real estate agent here with Kala Williams Cornerstone Team. Been living in Dallas for about seven years now. And I wanted to know more about Dallas. It's one thing to be living here, but it's another thing to know Dallas. And what I really appreciate about Leadership Dallas is all of the components. I'm a why we're doing it this way, kind of type of gal. So knowing and understanding how the Sheriff Department works together with dispatch and going to Salem to look at dispatch and see what they are doing and how organized they are. Now it makes sense why, you know, the EMS have so many mouths on their vehicles. So that was really interesting. The jail was really funny too. I have a few clients that were there, so I was able to be like, I've been where you work. The, what really impressed me too was going to the park and knowing all of the different budgets that you guys have for different projects. We can't use certain money for new projects versus renovations. So that made a lot of sense. Now I understand why grants are so important for our town. And knowing what is coming up when I talk to clients and they ask me what is great about Dallas. Well, let me tell you, we have great parks, we have a great community, we have the aquatic center. It's completely self-sufficient, pretty much. All of the, like the groups that we have with the pickleball and all of that stuff, that was really amazing to me. So I'm very much looking forward to paying it forward and helping next year.
Excellent. Any questions for Claire? You're off easy, Claire.
This is my second time around and hopefully not the last if you'll let me stay and help. This was really great. I'm Holly Williamson. Most of you know that. I teach people how money works. And I also run the New to Dallas meetup group. And so this has been so much fun, being able to like answer people's questions. Just last week at one of the meetups, somebody's like, what's there to do for young people in town? And I had answers and it was exciting. So it's been really great to work with these guys too as our team with our service project. We did a lot of work on Friday, a lot of work today. You'll see the picture of the totes up there. We sorted 600 pounds of clothes. So that's the numbers. We donated 603 pounds to the clothing closet, 143 to Bambino's, and 187 to the food bank. And some of us got to help work in the food bank today and help serve some of our community. So that, I always love this. I love learning about our community and all the different things. So thank you for this opportunity.
Excellent. Any questions for Holly?
Yeah.
Every time I learn something new. And I just love meeting all the different, it is different every time, just a little bit. And hopefully I can just help run it someday, you know? If that's okay.
Does that sound to everybody else like you was volunteering?
Yeah, so to pull a little bit back from the curtain on that topic exactly is the city's working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce to have this program be run by the chamber. And so the city will continue this next year, so year three, in partnership with the chamber, they'll be more involved in the implementation of it. We'll send a couple of their people to the group. And then with that, in year four, hopefully be able to pass off the program to the chamber to run it. And then maybe if you're continuing, I don't know if you are a member of the chamber, but if you are and if you continue to be, then you might get your wish.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, you got to pick your next speaker.
My name is Keith Waterhouse. I moved here from another state to retire. And I had 55 years in the suburbs and I found it a little claustrophobic and no privacy. So I wanted to move into a rural property. So I picked Dallas, Oregon. I live up on Cooper Road, out in the, kind of out in the woods. It's real nice. And I stayed, you know, I didn't spend that much time. I'd come into town, grocery shop and, you know, didn't really get a chance to meet anybody until Holly come along. She started a meetup group and brought me into this whole thing. And it gets boring, you know, being retired, you think it's neat, but then you kind of lose your sense of purpose. You're like, what do you do? What's my purpose? Anyway, let me get to the, so now you know. And I had worked for the Department of Veterans Affairs for over three decades and aid facilities maintenance. So you're going to hear me make comments about things I saw during this leadership group. And that's why I'm focusing on that. So first, in the civic session, I got to meet the mayor, learn about the city council. And what stuck out was that it's all volunteer, you know, not many people get money for it. And it's very admirable that everybody's willing to volunteer their time. And the mayor spoke about, he doesn't just do things for the city of Dallas, but other areas here in Oregon.
We don't get paid?
I'm going to introduce the motion to tonight's meeting to double our salary and make more cost to taxpayers instead.
And the healthcare, I was really impressed, all the facilities I went to, but especially the Dallas Retirement Village. Because I have a lot of experience in long-term care, elderly care, and maintaining facilities. And that place was the most impressive place I've ever seen, from top to bottom. They're just perfectly maintained. I'll never forget it. I was so impressed. And let's see, I could not believe how many social programs there are in this area. I've never, fortunately, haven't had to use any of them, but it just, like other people said, it just, I could not believe that the level of support there is here. It makes it nice to be here. The business day, I went to, what I remember was that I used to love to eat at Murphy's. It got sold and Open Road bought it. And I was really impressed at the, you know, the remodel of the building. But also that I never even, I never even knew what logistics were and that you can make money doing that. And they're such a multi-multi-million dollar company and the fact that they want to stay here in Dallas, I was impressed with that. The school systems, the part that stuck out to me was the vocational training emphasis, which I think is something really important these days. I really enjoyed going to the firehouses and seeing all the equipment, the capabilities, the, then of course the police drone, that was really, that was pretty, pretty nice. And then going to the jail, it was not exactly what I expected. It was really well-maintained and it's nice and quiet and orderly over there. I've never seen anything like it. It's like calm, you know, it's safe. I didn't, never knew that there is murder mystery theater here in Dallas. I was pretty impressed with that. I spent a lot of time in the Dallas City Park doing, you know, recreational walking in Rickoryell Creek Trail. But never at the pickleball court, so they made me play a little pickleball. So tomorrow I'm going to go for my first lesson.
All right.
If it doesn't rain. I'll be there. I don't know if the other guy.
I'll be there.
And then, you know, I had this, I square danced out of Salem, and so I'm having to drive back and forth. And I had this plan that, oh, well, I'm gonna, you know, this property I've got is pretty large and it's a lot to maintain. So I was thinking, well, I'm gonna maybe sell that and then go move, you know, up to Silver Ten or something, something closer. But after learning everything, I learned about Dallas. I don't, I don't think I could move away from here, so. That's me. Any questions?
I have a question for you. So of all the places that we visited, who was the most gracious host, fed us the best food and drinks?
Just a loaded question.
I would, I'd have to say the Dallas Retirement Village.
Spot on. Right there is a good picture of some of the food they provided for us. It was hosted, they had their staff there to serve us and give us all the food we could eat, all the drinks we wanted. It was great. So, and it was a pleasant surprise. We did not know that was going to happen. And it happened after five, so, you know, we could drink anything they gave us.
Then they had that nice Christmas decoration that set up behind the, that was impressive as well.
All right. Thanks, Keith. All right, send up the next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nate Riden. I am the co-owner and co-founder of Ultra Media. Our office is in Independence, but we're new to the community. We moved here from Iowa in January of 2022. And Dallas is where we landed when we first moved here. So we've been very blessed to have great success with our business here. And even though we live in Independence now, we still find that the majority of our community and business relationships still live in Dallas. So, yeah, that's kind of why I was excited to be a part of this course. Yeah, we spent a lot of time just learning about how the city works, how the community organizations work together and just provide support for one another. And it was just really cool to see just how well-meshed everything was. And, yeah, it's just, it's just really cool to see how everything works together. Some of my favorite places to visit were the fire station. We've done projects with fire and police departments in other states. And it's just really cool to be able to see how our own fire and police department works. The Dallas Retirement Village, again, really well-maintained. And they did a really good job hosting us. We were very honored by the way that they treated us. And then I would say my favorite of all of them was getting the opportunity to go visit Open Road and seeing just how successful a business can be here. That's very important to me as a business owner. And just seeing someone else starting here, being successful, and then staying here was just really cool to me.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions for Nate?
Same question as before. I'm sure after at least the first meeting, you had a, just at least a broad general idea of what it was going to be like. But what did you learn that surprised you the most?
I think what surprised me the most was, we knew that there were a lot of nonprofits and community support organizations here. But just seeing the depth of services that they provide.
You weren't expecting this, though.
Yeah. So one of, one of the ones that we've worked with before is Paddock, the pole catalyst and daydreamers. And just, it's such a really cool service to see the support that the kids in our community get to receive. And not just from our community, but the surrounding communities as well. Yeah, I was just really surprised by how well taken care of some of the people in this community are.
Very cool.
This isn't related to what you just presented, but what attracted you to Dallas, to settle there?
Yeah, so I actually have families that live in Dallas. So when we first, well, we- Yeah, so I actually have families that live in Dallas. So, um, when we first, well, we have visited quite a few times, and I don't know if any of you have visited the Midwest in the winter. It is not.
Unfortunately, yes.
So that's why we live here now. Um, so, uh, we knew that we loved Oregon for a long time, and just as my wife and I, um, have traveled across the country, going to college and taking internships, we always knew we wanted to land in Oregon. So as soon as we decided to finally put roots down, that's, this is where we decided to come.
Excellent. Thank you, Nate.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Choose your next victim.
Hello. Um, my name's Noah Hill. I am, uh, one of the co-owners of West Haven Vineyards. Uh, I used to be Beckenridge Vineyard. Um, and yeah, my family moved to here about four years ago, so I thought this experience would be really good to learn, um, about the community, um, especially since I'm out, kind of outside of town. I hadn't really experienced any of the, um, like recreational things we have to offer, and known all the businesses in town. Um, so it was pretty, uh, fun to just, um, learn about that and meet tons of different people. Um, and yeah, it was a really good time. Um, I had a really good time volunteering this morning, actually. Um, I haven't volunteered, like, um, at, like, kind of a center before, or like a, uh, um, I've only done, like, board work and stuff like that, so it hasn't been like physical, like, like with the customers and like, um, organizing through their clothes. I went to the clothing closet. Um, but yeah, that was a really fun experience. Um, I really would want to go back and do that, actually, after doing that. Um, and it's cool learning they're open almost every day. Um, so it's a really good opportunity. Um, and then, one of the things I really enjoyed, uh, was actually the civics class. Um, I've always been interested in local government, but I didn't really know how any of it worked. Um, and it was cool to learn how there's kind of different setups for different cities. Um, and here, uh, yeah, you guys don't get paid sadly. It's all volunteer work.
You don't get paid happily either.
Yeah. So yeah, I feel like, I feel like the work should be, should be paid for, but I understand it's different, different communities. Um, and so that's just kind of how it is here. Um, but yeah, as a business owner, I thought it was really, um, good to meet a lot of other local business owners as well. The networking was very good, um, especially as we were gonna try to grow a wine brand, like, it's just good to know people. Um, and this community's, uh, very supportive, which has been great. Um, coming outside of town, uh, we were kind of worried about not being, uh, supported right away, just because I know it's a close-knit community, but everyone's been very welcoming, which is awesome. Um, yeah, lastly, um, meeting Craig Downs was really fun, um, the local artist. I've seen a lot of his art. He does some art for Benedetto for their wine brand, so it was cool to meet him in person, and we, uh, started painting a Sasquatch painting. That was fun. Um, still gotta finish that, but it was a, it was a good time. Um, yeah, that's about it.
Alright.
So you summoned Sasquatch's nine-one-one call by painting it?
That might have happened, honestly. Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Or calling him in town.
Did anyone paint Sasquatch with handcuffs on in the place?
We showed up.
What my favorite question against, because you mentioned that you, one of the things you found especially interesting was learning about how governments put together and who does what. Is there, is there, what, what surprised you the most in terms of how the government is structured and worked here? Did anything really made you go, oh, I did work like that?
Yeah, I, I think, I thought it was really interesting that how the city council was elected, but is like volunteer at the same time. I think that's kind of interesting. Um, also how like, um, the dynamic between, like, the mayor, the city council, and the city manager. Um, I thought that structure was really interesting, because there's a lot of times where, like, either the mayor's like the head, and then the city manager and the city council are there as well. But, um, seems like the city manager kind of makes like tons of decisions, then goes to the council with stuff to present it, which is cool. But, yeah.
Especially if it's a wrong decision, then it's his fault.
That's true. Alright, and then are questions for Noah?
Nice.
Alright, thank you, Noah.
Thank you.
I know, they all said all the good stuff, and I'm done. Like, no, all that. I can't do that. Uh, Sarah, my, the job that pays me is Citizens Bank here in Dallas. I'm the branch manager. Uh, took over halfway through the term. Started off as the assistant manager. But my why, um, it's kind of personal, but I, after I had my two kids, ended up having a divorce, moving back home, and I was a single mom, and I went to college. And so I had to take advantage of a lot of programs to get through. I had housing, daycare assistance, food stamps, you know, all those things. And at the time, I saw myself as just here. And I was semi ashamed of it, that I had gotten myself into that position. I blame him now. But, um, I, it was one of those things that as I was working my way up and going to college full-time and working part-time, and the boys were under three. And, uh, I always said that, you know, when I can pay it back and pay it forward for all these things, I would, so that I could get over that stigma, I guess I put on myself, of being in that spot. And so since then, I've just wanted to learn more and more about being a leader, and what that means. And so when Leadership Dallas, I don't even know really what it was, but my former boss Jake basically told me, oh, you should do this. And I'm like, alright. And so I went into it with open eyes, and, and Brian, the first day, we were looking at the agenda, I'm like, oh, okay. Kind of a little bit different than I thought, but better. And so learning about city government was pretty neat, and just going through all the different classes. Um, I really learned about the collaboration. One of the things I do is serve on boards. Um, the Polk Adolescent Day Treatment Center, I'm the president, and then the Dallas Downtown Association, the Visitor Center, and the Chamber, I'm the treasurer of all those. So really, rising tides do lift all boats, and so when you collaborate together and you share resources, we have shortage of volunteers. By working together, we can all make, you know, us all raise up, and our community raise up. So that's one of the things that I really have focused this year on, is finding where, where's the collaborations? What pieces fit together? Who I can meet, who I can introduce, you know, being that connector of people is really what, what I would like to do. And I'm fortunate enough to be able to do it in the job that pays me, as well as my volunteers. So I think my favorite part was some of the connections I have made, because I've talked with a new Matt from the county. I was able to just make an appointment with him, meet him. We toured the grounds, and now I have spots for twelve trees for, uh, the Festival of Trees that we're doing this year. And Craig Downs is going to paint the side of paddock, the barn. So he came out and took some measurements. That'll be really nice. As you're going out on Ellendale, the side of that barn's gonna be very bright and artistic and just add to the town. So just meeting people and connecting is, I think, what I love the most about this.
Nice.
Any questions? Am I gonna get off easy?
You and I worked together on various things outside of this building. So I'm just, I'm just here to tell you, you can quit worrying about your leadership skills. You've got that handled.
Okay, thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, Sarah. You don't have to pick, there's only one left.
Alright, hi, everyone. Um, everybody knows me. Um, well, I was told by Brian I'd be doing this class, which at first I was like, mm, okay, it'll be fun. I get free lunch. It'd be cool. Um, but it actually ended up being really interesting. Living outside of Dallas, I live in Monmouth, um, and being super city-focused, because this is where I work, this is where I spend all of my time, I'm only involved in city events and city-sponsored, um, things, so I don't really go outside of the city stuff much. Um, and this class has actually showed me that there's a lot more that Dallas has to offer than just the things that the city sponsors. Um, and so I've kind of, um, been more interested in staying here and, um, getting to know the community more. I was very surprised about how many nonprofits we have. Like, everybody's been mentioned, or mentioning many times, but there is a long list. Um, I didn't really quite know how much support that we have here. It was really cool to learn about all of that. Um, and then my favorite day was going around the city park. It was one of like the first sunny spring days that we had, getting to get out of the office and go with all of these people, um, and tour the city park, and answer some of their questions also. Um, being in the class and learning, but then also having a lot of my peers ask me questions and getting to, um, answer a lot of those questions was really cool, and get involved that way. So, any questions?
What was the biggest thing you learned or the biggest surprise?
Hmm, biggest thing I learned, um, I think it's probably just the amount of nonprofits that we had, but.
About there's no E in Dallas.
Oh, my gosh. I knew he was gonna. There's no E in Dallas.
She held me with a speech, and, and I, everybody was in that office, and I said, watch this. She comes walking through the office, and I said, did you know there's no E in Dallas? She just stopped walking. She had, this was proofread and proofread and proofread.
It was a video game.
Yes, yes.
And mailed, mailed every household in Dallas, and I kept.
There's a misspelling in there?
No.
Nope.
He had me thinking there was. I walked in and I went, oh, no!
Okay, well, how did I miss it?
The amount of times that I checked it, and I made sure.
Oh.
Yes.
And I just kept repeating, there's no E in Dallas.
Yeah, you are correct. There is no E in Dallas.
And still isn't.
It never will be.
Good question of everyone.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Uh, it's a little bit of a gotcha. Um, so sometimes, especially on social media, we, there's always kind of a person who's for sure right, for sure. Um, now that you've had this opportunity, and all of you are kind of glowing, uh, with this excitement from, from what you've just done, and some of you seem to have brought your partners with you. When you see that, and it may not be on social media, it may not be a keyboard warrior, it might be a neighbor or a friend, is there something that you've learned that you feel like you could then pass along and say, oh, I see Holly, like, oh, yeah. Your eyebrows are like way up here. Like, and you don't have to share it, I'm just wondering if there's something that you're like, oh, now that I know this, when I hear that or see that, there's something I can say, actually, here's some information I can pass along, or we have a cool community. Okay, I see a lot of bobbleheads.
I did it just the other day on the community board. Somebody was like, I bring my kids to town, what are some activities we can do? And I had just did the parks and rec thing, so I had taken a picture of those truck trails, and, yeah, I was like, you can get free badges and stickers or whatever for this. Okay, I thought it was super helpful just to have those little pics of pictures I took. I was just like, look at this, you know, or, pretty cool.
So did you explain to your fellow, fellow participants about why it's so important that they involve the city in their Facebook? I figured you probably did.
Yes, I did, yes. When we were going through the park.
That was what she taught us.
I was like, let me tell you.
We didn't understand how important it is to have people share and like things on the website, because government can't self-promote on those websites. So, thank you for.
Here's a, here's a question for, for all of you, because you just gave me an idea. Um, sort of a variation on this, what was your biggest surprise, Nate? Did any of you go into this with a real distinct preconception about something that got shattered when you found out, oh, it's not like that at all? Anything like that for any of you?
Yeah, my, my family, they've been here for about fifteen, sixteen years now, and they, uh, as soon as they moved here, they're like, this town will run your business out of town. Like, this, they don't like new businesses, they don't support new businesses.
Interesting.
And, I mean, I've learned since 2022, before the course, but that's not really true, but, uh, what I've found out is that a lot of the businesses that they look at for examples of that are trying to skip ahead and push through, like, getting established on their own terms without actually working with the city. So when I have to go back to them and say, no, like, businesses aren't following regulations, and that's why they get shut down. Those two, the city doesn't want those businesses to come in, and so they don't let them.
Not playing by the rules.
Interesting.
Alright, so, um, I did participate in the class. Uh, I wasn't, um, I did not participate in every session. I wasn't there every time. Is it me, Kim? Could be me, someone. Every time I want to talk, it seems to go off. Um, and council, we're getting this fixed. We've done our all-around investigation. We realized that the system we have just can't be fixed. We're gonna get a different system. Um, we're gonna, so it'll happen hopefully soon. Um, but, uh, I think for me, one of the things that we did, and I didn't talk about it today, and I, we should have, Kim, this is a good note for next year, we should invite all of you back after next year's class, so that the people who actually planned and organized all the days were last year's participants, graduates. Um, so for me, this was really easy. Um, I just had to make sure to work with Kim, and really, when I say it was easy for me, it was easy for Kim, easier than last year, where, um, all we had to do was just make sure the graduates who signed up, um, for each day, uh, did the planning, and they made all the contacts, they planned every day, so what, uh, what this will be planned, and all the positive experiences they have were planned from last year's participants. And so, um, it's a great thing, and I, I like that model, because everyone here is gonna now plan next year's events. And, uh, and you all should come back for next year's graduation. We'll make sure you get invited. Um, Holly, you can't graduate antipathetic. No, I'm just giving you a hard time.
I mean, to be graduate, I have yet. I have found if you need to get things done quick, by colleague, by the her kids.
That's true. Um, but for me, what I really, uh, what I value a lot from this program is just getting to know everyone, right? The networking, uh, Lauren's talked about it, others did. Um, but just getting to know who's in our community, to me, is the most valuable part. Um, and I'm making really good, uh, contacts, relationships, um, knowing who I can go talk to, you know, whether they serve on other boards in the community. Um, even tonight, I didn't know that, uh, Noah, you serve on the, the Polk Adolescent Board, you said?
I'm on the Chamber of Vision.
Chamber of Vision Center Board? Okay.
Yeah, Sarah's on it.
I guess I didn't learn that tonight, but he's on the Chamber of Vision Center Board. Um, he volunteered, you volunteer there?
When you said that?
I did.
Sarah's the president.
Clothing closet.
Sarah's the president.
Something, anyways. But he, he volunteers.
They're doing our media.
Yeah, you partner with them. Yeah, that's great.
We just do paddock media.
All that being said, um, it's just, it's good to learn more about what, what everyone does, and that we're all invested in the community, and, and it makes a difference. And so that's, uh, this is a really valuable program, it's just a great thing. So, alright, that's enough for me. Um, we're gonna do some graduation ceremonies. So Mayor, why don't you and I go to the front, and we'll present our graduates with their certificates and, uh, gifts.
Can I just say something first?
You can.
I appreciate you guys all doing this. It's, it's a lot of fun to learn about your town. Um, my family came here in eighteen sixties, and for some reason, they stuck around, and, because they really liked the town. Um, you have to be careful who you're talking to and about, because you're probably talking about somebody's relative. I had a friend, uh, he was the principal at the high school. He came here from Bend. I didn't know him at the time, and, so one day he says, is there a doctor in your family? And we're very, very good friends, but we don't talk very nice to each other. And I said, uh, why do you ask? He says, because Dr. Laird Woods delivered my great-grandfather down in the Palomath area in the eighteen sixties. So I said, you mean to tell me it's my family's responsibility for you being here? So, and also you may have heard of a couple other names in the, in the area. My oldest son, John, is on the school board, and my second son, Michael, is a caretaker out at the cemetery. And, uh, so we're all involved in our community. Uh, my dad was mayor for many years here on the council, so we take turns. And so when somebody says, can you do this, or can you do that, you know, give it a hard thought, and hopefully you can do it, because that's what makes a strong, livable community, is the people that volunteer. So, anyway, that's all I had to say.
Alright, so we're not too formal, we don't have, you know. Well, just calling you up, you need to put a picture, and, uh, a picture of the mayor if you want. We're all reviewing the veil, and you're, alright, there's a picture.
Let's do a picture. Let's do a picture. A real talk.
So go ahead and just stand up here and show me.
Okay.
All right.
I know, isn't that cool?
It's like Little Hill. Next is Sarah Masser. And Alison Robertson. All right, beautiful house. So. Christmas present. All right, so I'm on my full resign. I'm just having fun and crazy. So we look excited for promotion for next year.
Thanks again, everybody.
All right, well, just a final congratulations to all the graduates. Thank you for your hard work this year, for your commitment to the program. We look forward to seeing you this next year. I will be in contact, well, probably through Kim. But we'll be in contact. We'll get together probably in July and start laying out what we want to do for next year, okay? So what's that?
They're all signed up.
They're all signed up? Look at that. We're already there. We'll still get together and talk about it. All right, because you also get to find people for next year. So that's part of the task is finding, so. All right, well, thank you again. That's all I had, Mayor.
I was just curious, which will be the first street that they have to call the police to?